Just give a very introduction. Hello, everyone, and welcome to this special journal conversation focused on the low field pediatric brain magnetic resonance, even segmentation and quality assurance. Lisa challenge. The speakers of today are Natasha Lapore, Jeff Tenedo, Difan, Traymel Roji, Kriti Gair, and Marius George Lingurado. And this year alongside the traditional version of the challenge being hosted at Mekhi 2025, a special parallel competition is being organized exclusively for the participants of the Rise Mekhi Summer School. For those who haven't registered yet, I will be sharing the website and the registration link in the chat. And without further ado, please join us and welcome our speaker, Natasha Lapore. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Alvaro, for this nice introduction. I'm Natasha Lapore. I'm a professor at the University of Southern California in Los Angeles and also at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. And we have a team here from Children's Hospital, Los Angeles and from Children's National DC. Welcome to the Lisa 2025 Challenge. As Alvaro nicely pointed out, so we're going to have the challenge as part of Mekhi 2025, but also there's going to be a branch of the challenge this year that is going to be specifically for the Rise Mekhi Summer School. And I will present, give a brief introduction today and then everyone else on the team will tell you a little bit more more details about the challenge and the two different branches of the challenge, the one that's the part, the one that's directly is part of Mekhi and then the special parts of the challenge that's part of the Rise Mekhi Summer School. And this challenge is funded by the Gates Foundation. Next slide. So to give you a brief introduction for Mekhi 2025 Challenge, this is the second time that we have the Lisa Challenge. And the main challenge is going to be comprised of three tasks. The first task. So and the first task is automated quality control. That's a task one of the challenge. Task two A is going to be hippocampal segmentation. And task two B is going to be basal ganglia segmentation. And as part of the Rise Mekhi School, we're going to focus mostly on task two A and task two B. On the, just on the segmentation tasks and the participants will compete and obtain prizes and public recognition as part of the, as part of the challenge. So next slide. The challenges is part of a large project that's funded by the Gates Foundation. It's called the Unity Project. And it's a huge project that they started a few years ago and the idea is to to collect information on environmental determinants of of brain health in children. So to see how the brain develops in different, in different environment in children zero to five years old. And the foundation is funded, a huge study around the world to try to understand how the brain develops in these different conditions and the goal is to try to, try to make sure that children can reach their full potential in every environment. And so if we go to the next slide. So these are different Unity sites. So as you can see, there's a lot of sites around Africa, around South Asia, Latin America, and also some, some sites in higher, higher resource environments in the UK, different parts of Europe, Australia, America, I mean, North, North America and so on. And if we go to the next slide, the way that this is, that this information is gathered, one of the principal ways that this information is gathered is that the Gates Foundation has put hyperfine scanners, which are ultra-low field MRI scanners all over these different regions and and these scanners are much, much lower field than the ones that are typically seen in hospitals. So typically in hospitals, you see 1.5 Tesla or three Tesla. These are ultra-low field scanners, 0.064 Tesla. And they've been put all over these, all these different sites to try to gather, gather this information. You can see a picture here on the left of this, what the scanner looks like. In the middle, you see a person being scanned. This is our own scanner at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, and the information is then collected on an iPad. And as you see here on the right and and then we get images of the brain of around the world, of these children around the world, as well as demographic and other, other types of information. Next slide. So why, why these scanners? Well, there's a lot of advantages to using these scanners as opposed to the more commonly used 1.5 and three Tesla scanners. The ultra-low field means that they have lower image quality and this is where you all come in looking, trying to design methods to analyze these lower quality images compared to, compared to the clinically standard 3T or 1.5T images. But the advantage of them is that they, one, use a lot less electricity. So they're plugging the wall scanners. So they, 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 they use very little electricity. They use like same electricity as a standard coffee machine. They require a lot less infrastructure. They also they don't require all these, you know, big rooms that are, that are meant just for scanner, for standard MRI scanners. They are a lot cheaper. They're about an order of magnitude cheaper than, than a three Tesla scanner. They, they also require much less specialized staff and, and also finally, if you have more fragile subjects, they can be, they can be rolled around to the bedside. And so they have a lot of advantages in terms of these kinds of studies. And so this is why we're using these scanners, even though the image quality is a little bit lower. And you can see examples of the, of the different sequences from the scanner at the bottom here. Next slide. The other challenge with studying environmental determinants of health in children is that the child, the brain of children is a lot more challenging to analyze compared, compared to adults. And here you can see an image of what different brain of child, of a child looks like at different ages. You can see three months compared to 24 months. For example, the contrasts are a lot lower at three months compared to 24 months. You can see that different structures change. The cell sign gyri much less well-defined at three months compared to 24 months. So, so different challenges with analyzing pediatric data is that, you know, so, so there's a different the, the images themselves, themselves are more challenging because the contrasts are lower and so on, but also you need a lot more data because every age is different. So these are the things that we're trying to address in this challenge and why, why it's difficult, but also why it's, why it's particularly interesting, we find. So I will now leave you in the hands of the rest of the team. So Jeff is going to be our first speaker. They're going to go a lot more into the details of the, of the challenge. So Jeff.
All right. Thank you, Natasha. Hi, everyone. My name is Jeff Tenedo. I'm a postdoc at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, working on characterizing normal pediatric development of brain structures through the analysis of MR images. I'm also one of the co-organizers of Lisa. So now I'll just be going over the data collection. Where do we get the data and what types of things are we looking for in that data? And also any type of pre-processing. So as Natasha mentioned, there are many sites, as you can see here, that are part of Unity, but there are three in particular who we've been working with very closely. They've been, we've been very communicative with them over the past couple of years. So the Lisa Challenge actually features data from one of the first ones, the University of Cape Town in Cape Town, South Africa, Aga Khan University in Karachi, Pakistan, and Makarewa University in Kampala, Uganda. So the following slides that I have here are just introducing their sites, their people and the goals of their studies in addition to what they're already doing with Unity. So first we have the University of Cape Town here with their project, The First 1,000 Days. This project seeks to model the development of executive function within the first 1,000 days of life, just about shy of three years. Their participants in particular were recruited from Gugulathu, South Africa township, which is located about 18 kilometers away from Cape Town. A total of 321 infants were tested for as many as five time points. When infants were approximately three to 24 months of age. I believe they're still in the process or just about finishing that final time point you see here in the slide, the 36-month time point. Their data collection included EEG, parent-child interaction questionnaires, biosamples, high and low field MRI, of course, as long, as well as sleep health monitoring and maternal health. Here's a slide just showing the distribution of their data across both low and high field data across each of the different time points so far. If you've done any type of study with human subjects, you know how difficult it is to battle attrition. So it's impressive that they were able to get the numbers that they were able to across this wide time, time span. Next site that we have here is Team Mine from Aga Khan University in Karachi, Pakistan. Their project, Mine stands for Magnetic Resonance Imaging to assess the neurodevelopmental impact of the environment in the early years. Their objective essentially is to longitudinally track the growth and neurodevelopment of children comparing the image quality of high and low field MRI and also investigating the relationship between the environmental factors such as maternal stress, early child attrition and brain development. Ultimately, that goal, their goal is to map how those early life experiences influence and shape brain structure and function, which will inform better health interventions for children during that crucial development window. Currently, they're working on mother-infant dyads from low socioeconomic areas in Karachi. Infants are divided into three groups, one, three, and six-month-olds with yearly follow-ups planned for four years. So for example, the next set would be one year, one month, one year, three month, one year, six months, so on until four years. Thus far, they have enrolled 270 infants and the study process included, of course, MRI, demographics and child development data such as psychological assessment tools like the Edinburgh Postnatal Depression Scale Parental Stress Index. And then before participation, all the dyads went, underwent pre-assessment for eligibility, medical evaluations, and of course, the low-field scans, just as like a precursor. The current study for them runs from August 2022 to August 2026. So they're still in the middle of it now. So far, they've completed 178 scans. Next one is, last but not least, of course, is Makarewa University or MAC in Kampala, Uganda. So within the first five years of life, their study aims to track how brain volumes develop in children with normal and low birth weight. They also seek to describe patterns in motor, cognitive, language, socio-emotional development in addition to physical growth. And they want to take a look at how those prenatal and postnatal factors relate to white matter volume and neurodevelopmental outcomes. Currently, their data collection consists of 171 infants from Uganda scanned at three and six-month time points. And then here's just a list of some of the demographic information that they've acquired and are analyzing as well. But for the purposes of Lisa, we're specifically just looking at the MR images. So this is just so you know that the studies at these sites are much larger than the MR images. So you can look forward to that in the future. And finally, here's a picture of all the amazing teams from each of the sites. And we'll say it now and again at the end, we're super grateful for the work that they've done and for communicating, collaborating with us on the Lisa Challenge. Thank you, guys. So now I'm just going to go into talking about more of the details about the data. These are just some of the statistics. We don't have to actually go over the numbers here. This is just going to be available to you both here in the slide. You can pause it if you want. And also, if you take a look at the Lisa website that we'll post a QR code for later. But we have data for, as Natasha mentioned before, task one, quality control and task two, bilateral hippocampi and basal ganglia segmentation. So I'm just going to talk about the data in detail right now. So first up, task one, data quality assurance. So as you know, portable MRI scanners, like we talked about the, that Swoop, they offer exciting possibilities. And, but with their benefits come challenges such as lower resolution, increased artifacts and limited contrast, which make it difficult to access, assess that image reliably. So this is where automated QA becomes crucial. Especially in pediatric MRI imaging, which is already challenging in in neonates, even for high-field images, the gray and white matter are not as clearly differentiated. As you know, infants are known to move around a lot, which is a little bit challenging when you're trying to scan them. And especially because we don't use sedation very often, especially in younger children like that. And then if you combine those challenges just related to pediatric imaging with the fact that you're also using an ultra-low field MRI, you get noisy artifact-prone scans. And the issue is like most of these QA tools weren't built for, most of these QA tools were built specifically for high-field images and adult brains. So they don't perform well when you combine these two challenges together. So right now, I'm just going to go over some of the artifacts that we actually categorize inside of this first task. The first one here is just positioning, is what we're terming positioning, also known as just like out of field, out of field of view. This is essentially where if you look through the data and you notice that there are parts of the brain or neurocranium, the skull, missing. And this could be because the field of view may not have been set correctly, or as we mentioned before, the child could move out of that field of view. And either way, the end result is that there's actual data missing from where the brain or skull should be. So that we're just terming positioning error. Next, we have motion. This is a very relatively common MRI artifact, but it presents as this type of blurry or ghosting images. If you can see my cursor, I'm just going to hover over this area here where it looks like the skull is almost like there's a secondary ghost skull that's hovering over the image. And then I don't know if you can see it with the resolution here, but there's like these lines which look like it's the the CSF repeating itself across the brain. So that's like that mirror that ghosted edges makes sense there. So that's what we're terming motion here. Next, we have banding, which thankfully is very rare, but it can present very obviously like in that first left image as these periodic stripes in the image. Or it can be a little more subtle where it looks like it's just cross, very subtle variation, dark light across the image. But either way, it's these horizontals or these verticals, these stripes occurring across the image. Next up, we have zipper. This one's different from banding. That is just, it looks like a single strike through the entire image, right? Like it looks like, as it, as it's called, a zipper running through the entire image. And usually you need to scroll through to see how far that zipper goes. But most often it looks like it's above the head. At least in the sagittal, sagittal view. If you were to look at it in the axial or coronal view, you might see it represent a little bit differently. Specifically for this image, the coronal view of this would be a plain, a sheet of plain like white above the brain. And then all of a sudden, nothing. But anyway, in this, here's what it would look like in the sagittal view. Next, we have noise, which, so we're terming noise, I mean, generally noise is just anything you don't want to see in an image, but in this case, we're talking about the graininess or speckling that you see, not just in the brain, but also even in the negative space around the brain. So you can see even around the brain space, there's this white noise that is present and that permeates throughout the entire image. Contrast, this is just the general idea of like whether or not the contrast was set correctly or presented correctly from the scan. The question you'd need to ask yourself if you're looking for an artifact that's labeled as low contrast, for example, is can you see the structures differentiated from each other? For example, you should always be able to see the ventricles in an MR image just because they have such high contrast. And so if you're not, that is probably a very low contrast image. And then more difficult, you would have something like, if you can differentiate the thalamus, butamen from themselves, from each other, and then also the surrounding white matter, gray matter. Next, we have distortion. So this is kind of a catch-all for any complex formation of artifacts, which ends up resulting in geometric warping of the brain structures. When we're teaching people how to like look for these artifacts, one of the things I like to say is imagine you take a paintbrush across a painting, you just like swirled it across the painting itself. It looks like the, the brain here has been pushed and pulled in ways that are unnatural. So that's just what we're terming here as distortion. So these are the seven artifacts that we've categorized for task one and in given U data for. We'll talk more about the details of what that data actually looks like, but in any case, the overall goal of QA is just to, isn't just to flag the flaws, but or even just to determine whether a scan is usable. It helps also to reprioritize scanning, especially if you can figure out if something is wrong while the subject is still in the scanner. You can quickly do another one. You can also identify if a scan is too degraded for downstream use, like for things like segmentation, which we'll talk about soon. So this becomes especially important in clinical settings where time and imaging opportunities are limited. We're really trying to make sure that the children are scanned at a specific age. So we want to make full use of the time that they have in the scanner. So on a broader level, automating this process enables scalable neuroimaging pipelines without relying heavily on radiologists to review it. So that's, that's especially vital for remote or low-resource settings where low-field MRI systems like the Swoop are often deployed. So in this context, automated QA directly supports equitable access to diagnostic imaging. So next, I'll talk about just like what, what happened to the task today, like where, when you receive it, what did that process go through? What did the data go through? So all the stuff that I'm about to talk about, you do not have to do. It's already been done. I'm just giving you a crash course on what happened to the data and why. So one of the things that may not have been obvious from what we were talking about earlier is that the way that the Swoop actually obtains the image acquisitions is in a trio of what we're terming orthogonal pairs, orthogonal trios. And so here we just have a little diagram showing the difference between acquisition and view. So every acquisition that you get of an, of an MRI has three views in this case. So for example, if you look at the axial image in the first column, it has the axial, sagittal, and coronal view. In order for the Swoop to get such low-field images at the speed that it can get them, it needs to only focus on one of the views at a time and make sure that that one view is high resolution. Feel free to pause the video, but if you take a look at the axial acquisition, for example, you'll see that the axial view is the only one that's actually high field. Or I'm sorry, it's higher resolution, not high field. The sagittal and coronal are very fuzzy in contrast. Likewise, if you go to the sagittal acquisition, the sagittal view of the sagittal acquisition is high field, but the axial and coronal surrounding it are, are lower resolution. So we can't just move forward with this data. We want to leverage the information that these three images were able to obtain and put them together somehow. So that process we call combined isometric, which is just taking information from those three higher resolution views and then putting them together so that they, all three pieces of information exist in a single image, a combined isometric image. From there, we also go through the N4 bias field correction. So just quick, high-level overview for every MR image that you'll ever receive or see. When it was obtained, there existed a smoothly varying field that existed on top of the original image. And this is due to just like in homogenities in the magnetic field due to perhaps the scanner itself or how the person's body actually interacts with the magnetic field. Regardless, all of it is just extra information, like extra intensity or darkness that is not due to the actual anatomy of the person. So in essence, we want to remove that bias field, remove that noise. But this problem has been well documented and well solved. So the, the solution for it is all MRI images usually go through this bias field correction. So anyway, after that, the combined isometric image, we go through a bias field, we go through this bias field removal to create a bias field corrected image. Next, we go through skull stripping. So we take that bias field corrected image and we actually take a look at where is just the brain. We, if you imagine it, the, if you take a look on the left-hand side, you can see more than just the brain. You can see a little bit of the nose, the mouth. You can see a 3D window on the bottom left where I actually turned away the child's face just to protect their identity. That's actually a huge thing, which to protect the child's privacy. But in this case, we just want to focus on what the, essentially the focus of the study is, which is the brain. So we apply a skull mask. We go through a process where we automatically detect where that brain is. Apply a skull mask by multiplying the images. Thus, the final output image is a skull-stripped image. Before I go to the next slide, because it might be a little confusing as I'm talking, all the things that we, I just described here, the bias field correction, the skull stripping, all of this is part of a process called normalization, which is just trying to get MR images to a point where we've removed all the differences that are not due to the anatomy. So in this case, like the anatomy that we care about looking at, in this case, the brain. So one of the core processes of normalization is registration, which is just the idea of taking in one image and manipulating it such as rotation, translation into a space where it resembles a template image, an image that is fixed. So in this example that you're seeing, this is a GIF, so it's going to just keep looping through, but the top image that I keep flipping back and forth between is the template image and what you're seeing right now are a bunch of manual rotations and translations to get a second image, a moving image to be in the same space as that template image. The reason why I want to do this is if we're taking a look at a particular voxel, you know, of one subject, we want to make sure that we're comparing that voxel, let's say in the frontal lobe, it should be that same part of the brain for all patients or all subjects in the study. So this registration is critical to remove any variances that you may have due to rotation, translation, which actually does happen a lot with pediatric imaging because in order to get them to sleep and relax and stop moving, oftentimes they'll be in slightly different angles. So it's helpful to do that in post-processing like we do here. So we'll take this linear registration and imagine this is happening, except we're going to do it three times and I'll show you that process real quick. So we'll take the skull-stripped high-field image and we're going to have a skull-stripped template and we're going to register those two together, thus outputting a registered skull-stripped high-field T2. The reason why I want to do it skull-stripped first is because we don't want to be registering the face of a template to the face of a subject, right? Because everyone's face is going to be slightly different. So we're just isolating it to just the brain. But anyway, you get, you output a registered skull-stripped high-field T2 and a registration mapping. The mapping is essentially the, the exact combination of rotations and translations that were accomplished to put that skull-stripped high-field T2 into the skull-stripped template space. Next, we take that same skull-stripped template and the registration mapping, except now we're going to go one step back to the bias field corrected high-field T2 that has the skull. to the bias field corrected uh, high field T two that has the skull. And we're just going to apply the mapping, um, the exact uh, amount of rotation and translation that we did earlier to that bias field corrected image, thus outputting a registered high field T two with skull. From there, we take the low field uh, T two now from the same patient, I'm sorry, from the same subject. Um, and uh, we have, assuming that they're an age match pair, which we do actually go through a process of making sure that uh, they're within a certain, the two scans, the high field and low field scans are within a certain amount of days of each other. The reason why we want that is because um, if you scan them with two different modalities, such as high field and low field, you can reasonably assume um, that they should look the same, you know, barring any differences in the actual modalities themselves. Uh, so once we have this registered high field image from the subject, we can register their low field image, uh, thus getting the low field uh, image into the same space as the high field. Why do we do all of this? The reason is because we can get a pair that looks like this. This is one subject at one time point um, that has two different scans, a low field image and a high field image. As you can see, the high field image has a lot more detail than the low field. So we actually leverage that high field by segmenting. Um, segmenting here is just defined as the process of defining a region of interest. So we segment and get the contrast details from the high field image, and since we were able to register the low field to the high field, we can just take that segmentation and put it on top of the low field. Because of the assumption that this is the same subject at the same age, uh, that segmentation should also be the same segmentation in the low field. Um, now, a little bit more information about segmentation. This is just a very quick example of uh, segmentation at a, a high overview. Right now, this uh, process, this uh, uh, video is segmenting the ventricle. Obviously, this is not being done automatically. If you try to apply automatic uh, um, segmentation to pediatric images, they tend to struggle just because of all the issues that we talked about with pediatric imaging. So the process that we have uh, is a manual one. Uh, this one, I'm just demonstrating here just so you get the idea of what is segmentation. Uh, but for task two A and to B, finally getting back to Lisa, um, we have the hippocampus on the left and the basal ganglia on the right. So now we're just going to talk more about the, I'm just going to pass off the, the speaking baton to more of our team members. We're going to talk more about detail about how you can actually get involved and understand the process of uh, the Lisa challenge. All right.
Hi, uh, I'm Kristika. I'm a postdoc at Children's National Hospital in DC. And I'm going to talk about the first task of the LISA challenge. So we have seen that low field MRI scanners uh, make bedside imaging more accessible, especially in uh, resource constrained settings, but they can often produce uh, artifacts and uh, low quality scans. So this makes automated quality assessment very crucial. So in this challenge, task one, participants are tasked with building models that can automatically identify these artifacts he scanned. The input is the raw image and the model must classify whether each of the seven artifacts are present. Uh, so artifacts in MRI images can widely vary and how they affect uh, the image quality. Simply knowing whether the artifact is present or not is not enough. We usually need to understand the severity of the artifact in order to make informed decisions. In this challenge, each artifact is rated on a scale of zero to two. A score of zero means no visible artifact, one indicates a mild artifact that slightly affects visibility, and two signals are severe artifacts that significantly degrades the image, image quality and interpretation. To tackle this problem, we uh, set it up as classification, which is a fundamentally machine learning technique. Classification involves training a model to assign uh, labels to data points uh, which are predefined categories based on patterns learned from labeled examples. In this uh, graph shown here, uh, which is a simple example where the model learns to distinguish uh, between circles and triangles based on their shape features. Similarly, our model must learn to classify the MRI images according to the artifact severity. The key here in our case uh, is to make sure that the model generalizes well um, uh, so that it can perform uh, well on unseen images, which is critical in real world clinical applications. Classification uh, comes in several forms, binary classification, which involves two labels uh, which has, uh, which is artifact present or absent, or multi-class classification, which involves more than two labels, like in our case, zero, one, two severity scale. And multi-label classification allows each example to have multiple labels simultaneously. So our challenge is primarily a supervised multi-class classification problem. Among the um, many approaches, deep learning has shown remarkable success in medical imaging because it can automatically learn the complex features from raw data, um, making it well suited to detect subtle artifacts in MRI scan. To uh, know how well our model performs, we use several metrics, um, which is accuracy, which tells us uh, how the overall fraction of the correct prediction. Precision measures how many predicted positives were actually correct in each category. Uh, recall shows how many actual positives the model found in each category. The F one score provides a balance of view between precision and recall. So these metrics help us understand the model's strengths and weaknesses. While there are many other metrics present, such as um, RO, ROC, AUC and specificity, et cetera, uh, they can provide further insights depending on the problem and the state, um, data set. So in LISA challenge task one, um, the setup is that each model will receive a pre orthogonal MRI scan, axial, sagittal and coronal from the same patient as of the input. The ground truth comes from um, uh, labels that were annotated by experts reflecting the presence and the severity of the artifact uh, in each image. These are the same seven artifacts that Jeff described uh, in the first part. So the model's job is to predict a quality label for each of the artifacts, matching the expert's assessment as closely as possible. Uh, to build robust models, certain uh, best practices are recommended. So in this particular challenge, avoid intensity based augmentations like brightness or contrast changes so that you don't alter the quality features we are, um, we want to detect. Instead, using geometric augmentation such as rotation cropping uh, to increase data variability without compromising the artifact characteristics is encouraged. While evaluating models uh, do not rely on accuracy alone because it is affected by class imbalance, so um, using measures such as F one precision recall is a better option. And cross validation is essential to ensure that the model generalizes well and monitoring for overfitting helps maintain the performance on unseen data. To help participants get started, uh, we provide a baseline model which uses dense net architecture, which is a popular deep learning architecture known for strong feature extraction capabilities. Uh, the model again takes trial orthogonal images as inputs and uh, outputs of predicted severity for each of the seven artifacts. And in this case, as a baseline, we trained seven separate models for each of the um, artifacts, uh, seven artifacts, which results in seven total models. And training and testing scripts are available in the, on the LISA challenge GitHub repository. Uh, moving to the task two and Austin, uh, we'll talk about that.
Hi, everyone. Uh, I'll be talking about segmentation, and this is task two, both task two A and task two B. So segmentation, uh, just as a quick overview, is the process of participant partitioning an image into distinct regions such that you have some grouping of neighboring pixels given some uh, predefined criterion. And this criterion is based on properties of the image, uh, that is features of pixels, for example, uh, that represent our so-called objects, where the objects are perhaps the hippocampus or the basal ganglia. That criterion doesn't need to be limited to features of pixels themselves. Also, that criterion can be defined by something like a deep learning or a machine learning approach. So these types of criterion uh, are inclusive in many techniques or strategies that I'll, I'll discuss in a moment. Next slide. As Jeff and Natasha alluded to, there are a lot of benefits of low field MRI, particularly the hyperfine sweep machine has uh, very enhanced portability and reduced clinical costs. Uh, the energy efficiency of it is, is also extremely um, comparable to, or extremely beneficial compared to high field MRI. There's also a limitation of uh, reduced sedation. Uh, I'm sorry, there's also the ability of reduced sedation, that is, there's not the limit of having to sedate young patients for long time, uh, for a long time in, in, as in high field MRI. But there are challenges that come with using ultra-low field MRI, that is, the low resolution uh, in these systems complicate issues uh, of, of already hard to see structures such as the hippocampus and the basal ganglia. And so having a low resolution in these areas reduces the delineation and boundaries between a brain matter uh, that surrounds these important and critical structures. Next slide. So we have a few targets for this challenge. The first target, as we mentioned in task two A, is the hippocampus. And you can see in the image here, we have the left hippocampus shown by the labeling in red, the right hippocampus shown by the labeling in green. Uh, click please. Thank you. Uh, in task two B, we have the basal ganglia. Uh, the teal is shown as the caudate uh, nucleus and the pink, uh, which is on the right, just right above that blue, uh, in a very small, that pink right above the blue. Uh, on the right side is also the caudate nucleus. And the gray and blue colors, we have the um, central form or ventricle nucleus. And this is the um, uh, por- portions of the anatomy that we're looking to segment for, for task two B. So the basal ganglia is in fact, uh, sort of divided into four structures, whereas the hippocampus is uh, divided into two, left and right. And then like, uh, one click this. And finally, we don't necessarily have these as part of a task, but we do provide as in the segmentation uh, challenge, the ventricles to support you with a number of um, options. So there are ventricles provided at the left and right, again, shown by the blue in the left and the yellow on the right on this far right image of our low field uh, MRI. And these ventricles are beneficial mainly for the purpose of enhancing those boundaries and helping to better delineate the objects of interest, that is hippocampus and the basal ganglia, within these ultra-low field MRI images. Next slide. So one of the ways that we think it's best for you all to get started working with the segmentation task, uh, which is the primary task that you'll work with at Mika Rise, Rise Mika, is to utilize N in UNet, uh, which is a very well-known uh, segmentation paper, um, actually defined of uh, as no new unit uh, by Ins- Insensi uh, from Nature in 2021. And this uh, approach is very straightforward and, and user-friendly in the sense that you provide uh, two things, simply the CISO images, that is, the images that we are giving you as, as the ultra-low field MRIs, and their corresponding ground truth segmentations, again, which we're providing you. So when you provide the network with these uh, two things, that is, the images and the segmentations, uh, at inference or test time, uh, all that's required after the training process of N in UNet is simply the CISO images and the outputs given our segmentations. And uh, the, the benefit to using N in UNet is that the magic, as you can see by uh, this figure that Insensi has created, uh, the magic comes from uh, the way the uh, network sort of self-configures its, self-configures, uh, uses a number of rule-based parameters. It also samples, you know, the images, um, that is the median shape, uh, the distribution of the spacings, uh, the intensity distribution. All these things happen behind the scenes to better perform segmentation with a basic uh, UNet, uh, a, a 3D UNet, um, which you don't have to worry about the details for. Uh, it's, it's really nicely uh, set up so that all you need to do is kind of take our files, plug them into the proper folder structure, and then you can get started. And of course, there's maybe much more you could do after this, uh, and a lot of different ways you can help to improve the performance. But this is a great introduction to a baseline approach that requires a little overhead, and you can probably uh, finish up, uh, maybe this evening, uh, after the summer school ends for the day. Next slide. So we've created a basic repository and uh, given a uh, simple uh, implementation of this approach for our last year's challenge. And we have not done so for 2025, but the folder structure and all of the content that you see in the GitHub here is going to be essentially the same. So in order to first uh, get working with N in UNet, you'll need to follow the installation instructions that N in UNet and Insensi actually provides. So you'll want to look at um, our GitHub, which has the read me from their uh, N in UNet directions on there, follow those installation instructions, uh, make sure everything is working. Next, you'll register for the challenge and download the data. And once you download the data, uh, it's always beneficial to have a look at that data to see what, what you're actually working with. And then when you understand the, the data and the, that is, the images, the CISO images and the ground truths, that is, the segmentations, you'll place those in the appropriate folders. Uh, in our case, we have developed this uh, sample GitHub with a dataset named already, dataset nine 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 underscore Lisa. However, you're welcome to customize um, the repository uh, once you get, pull it uh, to, to any degree um, for your own, uh, uh, for your own preferences. So in this case, the repository is set up with uh, every folder created necessary. And uh, this may be um, slightly overwhelming at first, but just take a look through all the details of the folders. Uh, the folder structure is really important for N in UNet. And each one eventually will end in a text file that'll describe, uh, perhaps if you put the image there or the segmentation there. Um, so if you have any questions about this GitHub implementation and the structures, uh, you're welcome to send us a message. Uh, or we have the Q and A uh, on Monday. Uh, but before uh, asking questions, I really encourage you to look at this uh, N in UNet oper- option and, and begin practicing with implementation to some degree. Of course, after putting the data in the correct folders, you'll just, you'll run N in UNet just simply as instructed, uh, using N in UNet train or something of this nature. And again, these instructions are provided on our website. They're also very heavily detailed on N in UNet's website, uh, on their GitHub, which of course we have forked. Next slide. So as I mentioned, the benefits of um, this, the N in UNet are that it's, it or works very quickly off the shelf. However, uh, one thing that we can do, instead of just simply providing the basic LISA uh, data to N in UNet for training, is some enhancement of those images before they're uh, provided to the network for segmentation. So one of these ways that is, is possible, or one of the ways that you can do this is through uh, deep learning. So what you see here is enhancement uh, with a deep learning approach that does a shift of, for contrast, um, some super resolution and other uh, similar enhancements to improve the object delineation, that is the hippocampal uh, visualization uh, for the N in UNet network. So this, this uh, approach that I'm suggesting here is actually nothing to do with, in fact, segmentation, uh, but really more so to do with the enhancement of the image as a pre-processing step prior to segmentation. And by doing this, you'll see in a moment, uh, there's, there's a, a great jump in dice similarity coefficient scores. And so something like this, uh, a simple image enhancement from the CISO image, the uh, LISA data provided uh, to by default, uh, can, can actually greatly improve the performance of the network. Another approach uh, that might be useful if you're not familiar with using super resolution techniques and, and other deep learning, you're just trying some basic sharpening, so applying some sharpening filters uh, might actually improve the performance. And uh, finally, another alternative here to um, to, to, to improve segmentation performance is not so much of the uh, sharp, uh, pre-training uh, for image enhancement, or rather, pre-training of the N in UNet. So um, again, we can discuss maybe more on, on So again, we can discuss maybe more on, on the Q and A session. But the pre-training that I'm defining here is actually pre-training in NNN unit to perform segmentations, perhaps on adult data. And then this network weight can be passed to the, or utilized with the data for our challenge. And essentially, you'll fine-tune the network to improve segmentation performance on pediatric ultra-low-field data compared to maybe adult high-field data found at open-source data sets like Oasis or IXI. Next slide. So this technique that I just mentioned about image enhancement or pre-training was really kind of preprocessing, in a way, or, or pre-segmentation strategies, or pre-training strategies, I really mean. So during training, though, there's also a number of techniques we can utilize. And one of these is a so-called multi-label approach. So the difference between the images on the left and the images on the right are that we have the ventricles segmented in the images on the right, shown by the yellow and then blue label colors. These ventricles are going to support the boundaries of our hippocampus and of our basal ganglia. And by providing these ventricles, the boundaries can therefore be more defined and the space of the ventricle that the segmentation approach is delineating is, is more obvious. In this way, essentially, the boundary pixels that might be slightly confused by a blurred image or a low-resolution image, like what you see here in the CISO challenge, is going to be reduced. That is, the, the network has an obvious segmentation label for our ventricle. So we know that we will not be segmenting this as a basal ganglia or a hippocampus. And in this way, the performance improves for dice, the performance improves for Hausdorff distance and other metrics that are critical for the challenge. So not only should, do we encourage the use of ventricles to support these boundaries, but we also encourage multiple, multi-label segmentation or semantic segmentation, that is, segmenting all our objects, the hippocampus, the ventricle, the basal ganglia, and then multiple parts of that all simultaneously. The last approach that I'll suggest as part of segmentation training is so-called ensemble. So there's a possibility to utilize a multi-label, I'm sorry, a multi-fold approach to NNN unit training or utilizing additional networks to create mini-predictions of our segmentations. That is, many, many of the same predictions for the right or left hippocampus. And then having those segmentations ensembled such that any stray pixel might be erased if it only occurs in one prediction. And this can actually improve your results significantly. Again, if you have questions about ensembling, maybe we can talk more about that on the 14th. But in the meantime, please, please check out ensembling if you're not familiar with it. Next slide. So our goal of this challenge, specifically task two A and two B, is to perform best in all of these five categories. Dice similarity coefficient, the simple overlap of two structures, that is, the ground truth and our prediction. So for example, the predicted hippocampus segmentation and the ground truth hippocampus segmentation. The best score is one or 100%, that is, perfect overlap. The next measure that is critical is Hausdorff distance, which is the maximum distance between boundary points of objects, which essentially means the farthest distance away. If you imagine these two are overlapping, but not perfectly, anywhere that there is not overlap, for example, and there's a distance between these surfaces, these boundaries might be considered the Hausdorff distance if that distance is maximum. Similarly, similarly for HD95, that is Hausdorff distance 95th percentile. We're looking at the distance for just this 95th percentile, or rather, below, sorry, above that. Not so much the maximum distance. Finally, for average symmetric, average symmetric surface distance, we're looking at across all the distances for the two corresponding surfaces and computing the average there. So these two, three, four metrics are all surface-based metrics, whereas one and five are actually volumetric metrics. In relative volume error, we're looking at the difference of volume, similarly to dice similarity coefficient, but in a slightly different way. Excellent. So these are a quick overview of all the techniques I just mentioned. Going from our, within our model, going from left to right, we have our baseline model, which you'll be able to very quickly implement, which is the ultra-low-field image provided to NNN unit. In the middle column, you see the, is the enhanced ultra-low-field image. Again, just simply trained with NNN unit in a vanilla, off-the-shelf way. And finally, on the far-right column, you see the enhanced image with multi-labels trained on NNN unit. And this actually is what performs, performs best. So in, in all these cases, NNN unit was not actually adjusted to any degree. We allowed it to run off the shelf, but in, in fact, our preprocessing, our prior to segmentation training approaches greatly boosted the scores. As you can see by, in the average column on the bottom there, the dice improved by actually 11%. Last slide. So I do want to encourage you, as you continue this challenge, to continue to participate and discuss your strategies within our forum. Again, we'll just, we'll provide the website very soon here. So share your ideas and approaches, especially with your colleagues. Submit early and often to our validation strategy, I'm sorry, to our validation. This is a good strategy because it allows you to see how your, your network is performing and evaluate on unseen data. And finally, if you have any questions or you're stuck, ask for help. This is a learning experience for everyone, so it'd be great if you continue to participate in this with a growth mindset. That's it for me. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. I'm Brahimulhi, a staff scientist from Children's Hospital, Los Angeles, and one of the LISA organizers. I will present some results from last year, 20, LISA 2024, held last year, and announce key dates for your participation in this year's challenge. Our challenge competition last year attracted a diverse group of participants with 35 teams from nine different countries across four continents that highlights its global reach and engagement. Last year was LISA's first year, and we expect even more participants this year. This is slide I explains the key days for LISA 2025 to help you plan your participation. As shown in the table on the left for the main LISA 2024 or five challenge, the validation phase opened on July 1st and will continue until July 24th. The short paper submission deadline is July 25th, which is also when the testing phase opens for those who submit papers. The testing phase will close on August 9th, after which we will evaluate the submitted Docker models on a test dataset. By August 29th, evaluations will be completed. Then final results and ranking will be announced on September 1st. And top participants will be contacted to prepare for oral presentations at Mika 2025 on September 23rd. In late October, extended papers can be submitted for inclusion in the workshop proceedings. Click to add ones, please. On the right, you can see the key days for the LISA challenge at Roy's Mika Summer School, which will be exclusively for you. The competition starts on July 14th. The validation phase will open on July 21st and run until August 24th. During this phase, you can submit your models as many times as needed to receive evaluation on your developing models for the segmentation task. Docker submissions are due on August 25th. Top performers will be contacted on September 1st, and the top three teams will be announced during the LISA satellite session on September 27th. Click to add ones, please. You can participate in both the main LISA challenge and the LISA challenge at the Roy's Mika Summer School. Participating in the main LISA 2025 challenge gives you the opportunity to present your methods live at Mika 2025 and to have them published in the LISA proceedings. All training and validation data are available on the website, accessible at the provided link here. If you are participating in LISA at the Roy's Mika Summer School, please include the password 321 underline rights in your data agreement during registration, so we can confirm your viewership of this summer school session. For the first task, quality assurance, we used several evaluation metrics, including F1 score, F2 score, precision, recall, and accuracy to present a more comprehensive evaluation. We calculated these metrics using macro, micro, and weighted scoring. For example, micro F1 score combines all instances across all classes to calculate the single precision and recall. It gives equal weight to every instance, so it's influenced more by larger classes. Micro F1 score calculates the metric independently for each class and then takes the average. Weighted F1 score also calculates the F1 score for each class and calculates their average weighted by the number of true instances for each class. You can find the scripts for calculation of these measures on the LISA GitHub repository linked on this slide here. For the second task, hippocampus and basal ganglia segmentation, we evaluate the submitted models using the following metrics. Dice similarity coefficient, Hausdorff distance, 95th percentile Hausdorff distance, and asymmetric surface distance, and relative volume errors. These are similarity-based and distance-based metrics that together provide a comprehensive evaluation of the segmentation results. Detailed implementation for these metrics can be found at the link shown here. For LISA 2024, we received a total of over 150 submissions during the validation phase, with 69 submissions for task one and 83 for task two. For the final ranking, we decided to use weighted metric, a metrics to address the challenges posed by an imbalance data. So the higher average score means a better ranking in the last column. So you can see the three teams and their performance metrics. Team Vanu from Bangalore, India won first place with an average score of 0.801. Team ZBOY101 from China won second place with a score of 0.795. And finally, team Wux 527 from Seoul, Korea won third place with a score of 0.792. Next slide, please. Here are the top three teams for task two. For final ranking, we use the average of one minus dice score, Hausdorff distance, 95th percentile Hausdorff distance, asymmetric surface distance, and relative volume error to ensure consistent evaluation across all submissions. So the last column shows the mean error of all the metrics shown here. As evident, a lower average score corresponds to a better ranking. Based on this ranking system, we have team Wux 527 from Seoul, South Korea, won first place with a score of 1.744. Team Hap from Australia won second place with a score of 1.844. And finally, team Winzia from China won third place with a score of 1.870. Next slide. The LISA 2024 proceedings paper, including all the methods presented by the winning teams, is available at the link provided here. It was published by Springer as open access, so you can download and use it for free. Thank you very much for your attention so far.
Hello, everyone. I'm Difan. I'm a research assistant in Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. So on my side, I will go through the website side. So in the LISA, we talked that we have the three subtasks. Please click. So here we have the, in the main challenge, we have the, we're based on the Synapse website. So when you go through the link and you could click the challenge, and you will see the task one, which is a quality assessment, please click. Click. And here we could have the task two A and two B for segmentation for task description. So this is how we have the three tasks in our LISA challenge. So please go next. So here, all evaluations are managed through the Synapse workflow autostrator, CWL-compatible infrastructure. It ensures all submissions are scored consistently using the same inputs, scripts, and GOAT standards. Once validated, scores are pushed to Synapse and reflected on the leaderboard in near real time. This diagram summarizes the full submission workflow. So as a first one, we could package your predictions or Docker container. And for second, so you upload to Synapse and submit to the evaluation query. After that, the CWL-based scoring system will validate and score your predictions. So if successful, scores are pushed to the leaderboard. And if not, you will receive a validation error email with details to fix. Next, please. So here, the first step for the, for your start is to register the challenge. So please go to our website and go to the Wiki page, click here to register, and sign and submit your data agreement form to lisa.mrichallenge@gmail.com. Next slides. After that, please create a Synapse project. So go to Synapse, projects, create a new project. Name it descriptively, can, for example, LISA 2025 without your team name, and share the project with your team via project tools, sharing settings. The most important thing is that to ensure all members are certified users. This is required to upload files. Next slide, please. So for task one, each case includes three low-field MRI views, Axel, Chrono, and Segital. These are stored in .ni.gz format, and their file names looks like the lisa_xxlfs_axel.ni.gz. So where the XXXX is a case ID. So for validation data, the file's name starts with lisa-validation instead. In task two, each case only has one CISO image, like the lisa_xxlfs.ni.gz. So your job is to segment either the hippocampus in task two A or the basal ganglia in task two B. So your predict masks must be named exactly, which should be here. So like the hippocampus and basal ganglia for two subtasks. The file names, underscores, and order all need to match exactly, otherwise the submission may not be accepted. So during the validation phase, task one predictions go in a single CSV file. Task two predictions should be saved as a .ni.gz masks and compressed into one dot zip or dot tar dot gz file. In the test phase, we ask participants to submit a Docker container. This container will run automatically without internet and should read input data from the input folder and read the results to the output folder, and follow the same naming rules. So in short, naming conventions are strict, so a single typo or wrong file name may cause a submission to fail the evaluation. Next slide, please. So here, we are going to prepare prediction files. So like we discussed on this previous slide, so please make sure your naming is correct. So for the step four, you could upload to the Synapse. So navigate to your Synapse project, the files type, and click the upload icon, which is at the top right, to make sure create field structure and naming. Next slides. So please use the Synapse website to submit your files. So only the submitter can monitor status in the submission dashboard. All submissions must be in by 11:59 PM UTC on the deadline date. Next slides. So here, you could check your results. So in the website, which has the table, So in the website, which has the table section and you could check your scores in task one or task two A and task two B. Next slides. So you could also go to Wiki page and click the results session. There will show the validation phase, which is open for now and you could show, you could see the task one and task two A and task two B, the leading board for now. So these are two parts which you could, you could, you could see your results. Next slides. So in the test phase, we require participants to submit their models as Docker containers. This allows us to ensure reproducibility and fair benchmarking because every submission runs in the same secure offline environment. Your container must be fully self-contained. It should automatically produce predictions when it runs without needing any manual steps or internet access. Specifically, it will read input data from the input folder and write results like predictions dot CSV or dot zip file to the output folder. Next slide, please. This slide shows you how to write a basic Docker file for your submission in the test phase. On the left, we walk through the key commands you will need. First, start from a lightweight Python image. Here we use a very simple base image like the Python 3.9 Slim. Then install any Python packages in your model needs. So here we just go through with the run pip install requirements dot X T. So we put any requirement packages into the requirements dot X T file. And next, bring your inference code and model into the container using copy. So here we show some of the two example command there. You copy the run model dot P Y and model dot P T file into the user local bin folder. And finally, specify what to run when the container starts using entry point. So this is very important because the Docker will run which Python file. So on the right, we show how to build your Docker image locally. So typically, we just use the Docker build with dash T and use a Docker dot Synapse dot O R G with the Synapse ID and your model name and a potential version tag. So the Synapse, for example, Synapse 12345 is your Synapse project ID and my model is any name you choose for your image. And V1.0 is an optional version tag. So this command will create a Docker image that you can later push to Synapse for evaluation. Next slide. So now let's look at how to push your Docker image to Synapse and submit it to the LISA challenge. So first, you log into the Synapse Docker registry using docker login, docker dot synapse dot O R G. Then you push your image using a command like docker push, docker dot synapse dot O R G, your Synapse ID and your model and the version tag. So after that, you can verify the image has been uploaded by checking the Docker type in your Synapse project. To actually submit the image, go to Synapse, click the Docker and then submit to challenge. Be sure to select the correct queue, task one, task two A or task two B, depending on what your model is for. And finally, just a quick remember, only the person who submits a Docker image will be able to see the status on the submission dashboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee, and thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I'm Marius Linguraru from Children's National Hospital and the president of the MICAI Society. And it is my distinct pleasure to wrap up this presentation with some exciting news. And that starts with the LISA 2025 prizes. And as I think everybody knows after this presentation, we have two sections of the challenge. One is the LISA challenge that will take place at MICAI and it's incorporated in the conference and as you heard, is running for its second edition. And there, everybody can sign up and they can participate in all the tasks, one and two, with the two sections A and B. And for each one of these tasks, we're going to have three prizes, starting with $1,000 and down to 250 for the third prize. Also, everybody's going to get a certificate. This is, if you want to participate, you're absolutely invited to and encouraged to to participate in the, in the main run of the challenge at MICAI. However, we have this very special event that we're doing with Rice MICAI and in coordination with the summer school. As you heard from today's presentations, where are we going to open task two A and B, particularly to the participants in in this challenge? So you'll have a chance to learn more about how to participate in LISA, but how to participate in any type of challenge. And LISA is, I think, very special for for Rice because it uses data acquired from LMICs. It's using technology with low cost, better portability and that requires AI solutions specifically done for this emerging imaging technology that is ultra-low field MRI. So again, this is running on its own schedule, as you heard today, and we'll have some QR codes for you in a moment. And we'll have cash prizes for 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 this as well as a token of appreciation and encouragement for the summer school and the participation here to to take more action in attending MICAI, participating in the MICAI Society and of course, doing capacity training and and building back home wherever you are. And if we can go to the next slide. This is, of course, an effort of many, many people. And first of all, thank you to everyone for their extraordinary presentations today that I hope you appreciated as much as I did. And I should start first with thanking Rice MICAI to Esther Pujo and the board of Rice MICAI for the extraordinary work that they're doing. Please engage with Rice MICAI and with many other opportunities. I saw lots of questions about mentorship and Rice is offering mentorship. There are other mentorship programs at MICAI and offered at the conference. Please take advantage of these things that the MICAI Society is offering and it's offering there at no charge. Specifically for for LISA, this could not have been possible without the great support of the Gates Foundation. And you see here four awards that have supported the background information towards LISA. And Sean Deoni, who is here pictured, is our program director from the foundation and he is the facilitator of all this great work that is happening. But today, you also heard from our colleagues from Children's Hospital in Los Angeles, Natasha Lapore, Jeff Tamedo, Rahim Ruhi and Difan. Thank you all for driving this this challenge and the work that you're doing. Our team at Children's National, myself included, but also Austin Tap and Kritika Ayer. Also, many, many thanks for today's presentation and driving this this challenge. And of course, this is done with data coming from a variety of sources. Kristy Donald from Cape Town in South Africa, Victoria Nankabira, who is in Makere, Makere University in Uganda, and then Sidra Kalin, Sadia Parkar and Salman Osmani from Agakan University in Pakistan. They've worked very hard for this and data available on these challenges is thanks to them. But this initiative that comes with the Gates Foundation is growing and I think I'm not going to be over optimistic thinking that we're going to have more data coming from other areas and available to the LISA challenge in the future. So once again, many thanks to to everyone who organizes this and to Rice MICAI for working together with us to open this challenge, particularly to the participants in the summer school and in the Rice MICAI programs. And next slide. To wrap up with with more information, both about the main challenge and the Rice MICAI faction of the challenge, please take your snapshots now and you'll have all this information at the QR codes. And what this is holding here, I think we're going to have a specific Q and A session on Monday at the summer school for for more conversations. In the meantime, please have a look at the documents, the information about the challenge. You'll probably have better questions to to ask at the time with more information in the background. Also, I'll see you back on Monday also with the presentation of the MICAI Society at the, I guess, official opening of the summer school on the 14th. And we may have just a few more minutes here. And Alvaro, if you want to take any questions, any, any further discussions. There are a few more questions I see online as well. All of 30 of them have been answered already. So I'm passing, I'm passing the mic to you, Alvaro.
Thank you so much. So thank you so much for you guys for the presentation was very, very good and very well detailed. I tried to reply most of the question that you guys have asked me regarding the mentorship program and the challenge. Just to repeat myself again, you have to register to the MICAI Summer School. They will start on Monday 14th, as Marius already mentioned. You have the link to the website in the chat. Apart from that, for the mentorship is targeted towards the students from low and middle-income countries who have never attended MICAI before. And the requirement was to participate in the challenge in order for us to match the best candidate with the mentors. As also Marissa mentioned, MICAI Society has all the mentorship programs that you can look up to. And apart from that, if you have other questions, please ask next Monday to Esther and to Marius and the, on the specific scheduled time, yeah. So I don't have any, any other thing to say. I will wrap it up. Thank you so much, guys, for for attending and for the presentation once again. I hope you get a lot of submission this year and and that's all. So thank you so much, guys. Have a nice weekend.